Ms. Silcox.
She's not listening.
Please approach the bench.
I hope it's her. I hope it's her. So bad.
Why are we spending sixty, seven million dollars for diamond plate?
Well, they can't find anything else.
And they can't just put a board up?
What kind of board?
Any kind of board. Quarter inch wide. I would, I don't care. Something we can replace easily.
Well, you won't have to replace diamond plate.
For sixty-seven thousand dollars, I could buy a whole bunch.
It's forty, it's forty-seven.
I don't care.
No.
It's too much.
You can't.
I just don't want to have to come up short and have to do it like that maybe.
Um, as far as the budget part goes, we don't know. Like we've been budgeting very, keeping it.
Unforeseen, you know, how it was.
Yeah. Now, we've been keeping like, stuff like, and so we have some stuff at Western Park and like if we have extra, we'll do this, but if not, this is what we're doing. But if you guys have all the damage that we have had down there, oh my gosh, it's been horrible.
Well, some of us, those kids, they are not being held accountable for the damage.
And that's why the children are going to help.
Do we need to make it so parents must be there? I'm Jack. I'll do that. I'll do that heartbeat.
The thing that I think.
Part of the age of fourteen, as our parent.
Are going to have a meeting with both parties this year, both organizations, and it'd be awesome if you guys came and was in support of what we were like.
You're, you're going to do that before you set it up, check that.
Okay.
See what our schedules look like. Cause like I'm not here most of the month.
It, it'll be till probably July. It'll be a little bit later.
Yeah, try to set up.
Cause well, by then you have the contract done, fees set up, whatever you're situated.
Cool.
And then we'll have everything and say, this is what we're doing.
Cause I'm just to the point where, why are we replacing what the little rascals tear up?
And that's what we.
We're on a babysitting service.
We put the board up. So we, we talked about different board. We talked about the board that went around the ring. We talked about different board. Ultimately, we're about sixes and they told us the board that like, um, has like a hollow space in it. And they said that in the cold, if the kids are going down there, being used, it will pop. And so we're like, we're just going off to go this route and hope not. It will be durable. I mean, the diamond plate should last forever.
Oh leftovers. There's a leftover diamond plate on it.
So yeah, it was.
We're not throwing away.
That's a cushy thing. You can't get that. Oh, no, no. You're just like, well, you're good.
The damage.
Yeah, I do like the idea of holding them captive.
Are you ready?
Aye.
Too bad.
Oh, you're fine. You're fine. All right, welcome. It's three o'clock. This will be the meeting of the Uintah County Board of Commissioners. It is the twenty-fourth, or excuse me, sixteenth day of twenty-four. We're at the Lord, at the commission chambers. We'll have a prayer by Davy Jensen and pledge by Melanie Silcox. If you haven't, please place your electronic devices on stun so they don't ring. Then be sure to sign before you leave if you haven't. Thank you, Davy.
As we come together today as brands and community, that we will get the things that we need to get out and say these names on the vice end of this.
Amen.
Please stand following the pledge. We pledge to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, thank you very much. My first order of business, the approval of the minutes of April eighth work session and April ninth, uh, meeting.
So moved.
Okay, I'll call for a vote.
Aye.
Aye. Second one is reported warrants, Mr. Wilkins.
Commissioners, I have warrants from April eleventh in the amount of one million, one hundred twenty-eight thousand, four hundred fifty-nine dollars and seventy-three cents. Few one timers on here, or regular one is insurance to Cigna, three hundred ninety-five thousand. Green River Construction, this is on the pre-trial services remodel to ninety-five thousand, five hundred. We also had a check to Ken Garf for one hundred and forty-three thousand and twenty-eight dollars. We released a bond to N and E Development, a partial release of seventy-five thousand, two hundred ninety-two dollars. We also paid, we had a IT grant to Ramsey Storage for seventy-four thousand, one hundred and seventy. And we also paid Vernal City for our share of the courts at sixty-seven thousand, six hundred and six dollars. With that, Commissioners, we also have two claims. First one is check number three nine one, five seven three to Bureau of Reclamation. This is from twenty-twenty-two. This is the royalties owed on the Bruff pit, sixteen thousand, four hundred and sixty dollars. Next one is check number three nine one, six one two to Ken Garf Chevrolet for one hundred forty-three thousand and twenty-eight dollars. And that's the claims, Commissioners.
We're, um, I thought we approved, did we not approve the Ken Garf trucks for the sheriff's office?
We did, but they didn't get the POs in the right order.
Okay.
They purchased before they got POs.
Okay.
Or attempted to get POs.
And that ninety-five thousand, five hundred dollars was to what entity on the, um, larger?
The Green River Construction.
Okay. And the other one was entity something, the seventy-five?
N E. The seventy-five thousand went to N and E Development.
N and E, okay.
N and E. They are doing the subdivision on Fifth West and fifteen hundreds out there.
Okay, do we have a motion?
Um, I would make a motion that we approve the claims that have been presented by Mr. Wilkins.
Okay, call for a vote.
Aye.
Aye. No tax matters? Okay, we have no tax matters today. We have the announcement of a new IT director.
Yes. Yes. I was just looking for you. I'm like, where is she? Um, I wanted to introduce our new IT director. It's Crystal Clark. She has already started. So we are very grateful. She has accepted this position and we look forward to all the great things she is going to do with our IT department. And if you would like to say anything, feel free to do that. She's been with us already, how many years?
Sixteen, I think.
Sixteen years.
Something like that.
Quite a few, yes.
Yeah, it's, I worked for the sheriff's office indirectly for a long time, but I really only accepted this because I have, you can all hear me, right?
Oh, it has to be on the recording though.
Can you hear me now?
Yeah.
Okay. I just really accepted it because it's a good team. It's a good team and that I work with, and that's really what made this an easy choice. And we all support one another and we work together. And the only reason I could do this is because I have people that know more than me.
Thank you, congratulations.
Yes, thank you.
All right, Angie, your turn. Voca presentation of the, for the Attorney Generals. Oh, Attorney's Office, close enough. Comes from the Attorney General.
I am Angie Erkenrak. I took over the position of Victim Advocate Coordinator in December. We are fully staffed with two Voca funded employees. I have Brooklyn German and Tricia Cullum, who are with our office now. Um, to date, from January one to date, we have served three hundred and thirty-three new individuals with the majority of those cases being domestic violence and assault cases. We have assisted many of these individuals in obtaining protective orders, walked them through the court process, and referred them to community partners to get further assistance with mental health, housing, and various organizations to aid in their healing journey. Um, National Crime Victims Week will be held April twenty-first through the twenty-seventh, and we will be participating in the Seeds of Hope Project this year. The project offers a poignant symbol of resiliency and renewal for victims and survivors of violent crimes. Each packet contains forget-me-not seeds. A reminder that despite the trauma endured, these stories will not be forgotten. By sharing the seeds, we aim to cultivate empathy and support for those affected by violence, fostering a garden of compassion and understanding in our society. Um, we should be receiving our seed packets as well as posters and bookmarks this week, so look for those throughout the community.
Okay. I'm sorry, I missed the first num, the number you said of the people you've helped.
Three hundred and thirty-three new individual, individuals from January one to today.
Today. Do you know how that lines up with last year?
Um, it's, we're pretty, um, on the same guidelines as last year. Don't see a huge increase, so.
Okay. Thank you.
Must I call your name? Just come on up. We have another one of those Angie girls. Not the same one even.
Technically, I'm only supposed to do this twice a year, but figured you guys missed me, so I'm back again. Um, so at the Children's Justice Center, we just hired a new Voca funded employee, Elsha Lance. She will be tracking, uh, mental health services and ensuring the referral process between the Children's Justice Center and our contracted mental health therapist center, or therapy center is as seamless as possible. Um, in June, we will have a new medical provider. They will be under contract with Primary Children's Hospital. We triage all cases that come through the center with our medical provider, and if appropriate, they will provide a forensic medical exam on location. Um, in the last quarter, we assisted a hundred and sixty children and their families connect and actively attend. The actively attend part is important because we do refer a lot more than that, but to have that kind of success has been really great. Um, attend, so we've helped them attend evidence-based, trauma-informed therapy. And we have been able to help them by, financially by helping them with CVR, which is the federal funding for victims of crime, as well as a grant that we have with Voca that pays for mental health. Um, obviously, there's criteria and, um, a referral process. Um, so we, we do that and then we're able to send. So of those, that's actually pretty awesome. We're happy with that. Um, this last quarter, we, we met with a hundred and twenty-seven new victims and their families. So that's kind of combined with the family members. Um, we've provided eight hundred and thirty individual services, including child protective orders. We have worked diligently to try to attend the hearings with the families for those protective orders. We've helped with resources for housing, jobs, access to affordable legal services for the fallouts that happen when child abuse, um, happens in families. Uh, we continually work to mitigate the trauma of child abuse in our community by partnering with different agencies and coalitions to help with awareness and statistics, anything that we can do to help the community in that way that falls in our guidelines of our contracts, we, we do. Um, we appreciate our funders as we go on about our mission, providing cohesive and comprehensive approach to child abuse investigation. We try to keep our team up to date as best we can by providing training. Um, we recently just, um, registered nine of our MDT investigators for a training in Dallas, Texas in August. So we're looking forward to that. Um, we do this while we try to uphold the children and their families' victim rights. Um, we're also offering a body safety class for the children, for children and teens in our community. You don't have to have come through our doors or be a victim. It's just really great information about keeping your body safe, prompting conversations with parents and their children to be more cognizant of that. Um, we also offer parenting classes to help parents know what to be mindful of and tips and tricks on how to communicate with, for, with their families and for the whole community, so.
Okay, the difference between your program and Ms. Sugarbox's program?
So I am the cornerstone of child abuse investigations. We are a model designed to interview, um, with the least intrusive traumatic way possible. So it's just a one-time interview, hopefully. And we record that so that investigators can have that to refer back to, so they don't have to continually re-traumatize our child. While they're there, we offer what's called a CPM. So it's a mental health screener to see how they're doing based on that score. That's kind of when we refer them to Kodiak Counseling. Um, in that screener, we also, um, ask the Columbia questions, which is a mental health screener addressing suicidal ideations in the children. If we have victims that are scoring high in that way, we added the MCOT team from Northeastern Counseling Center to respond, and they have been so fast in their response to us, we couldn't be more pleased. Um, and we take care of that, that way, and then continue to refer them to their trauma therapists. Um, we offer the medical exams, child protective orders, so we're basically like the beginning as they go forward in determining whether or not they have sufficient evidence and things like that to go to the county attorneys. Um, all crimes go to the county attorney, so adult crimes, child crime, all of it. We're just the child portion of.
And she's the adult portion, basically.
Adult and child as it's, as it's done being investigated and it goes to trial.
Right.
So she keeps them up to date there, but we collaborate really well together, so.
Good.
Mm-hmm. Any other questions?
Thank you. All right, revitalization grant. Jenny?
Jenny Bird Grants. Um, I have two revitalization grant agreements. The first one is, um, for the Road Department Sander. This one needs to be ratified. So it was sent over in January and it was electronically signed by Commissioner Horux in January. So if, um, that is for forty-three thousand dollars for one piece of equipment. Um, this, this was approved in October by the revitalization board.
Okay.
So.
You have a motion?
Can make that motion that we, um, ratify the revitalization grant for the semi-truck Sander or some revitalization grant agreement for the semi-truck Sander. It's twenty-four dash DWS dash zero four one eight for forty-three thousand dollars.
Okay, I have a call for a vote?
Aye.
Aye. All right. Onward and upward.
Um, the second agreement is for homeless services for eighty-five thousand dollars. The agreement term is from October twenty-third, twenty-twenty-three to December thirty-first, twenty-twenty-five. And this is, um, it's a new contract, but we've had similar contracts in the past, same amount, same services. It's for motel and transportation vouchers.
Sorry, you said it begins what date?
Um, October twenty-third, twenty-twenty-three. So it was approved by the, the board in October, and then they just sent the contract over last month, and it goes through December thirty-first, twenty-twenty-five.
Okay. Perfect, thank you. Um, I would make a motion that we approve the revitalization grant agreement, twenty-four dash DWS dash zero four two zero for homeless services in the amount of eighty-five thousand dollars.
Will you authorize it for electronic signature for Commissioner Larson? John Stermer had us include that in the motion last time.
Oh, okay. Yep, from a term of October twenty-third of twenty-three to December thirty-first of twenty-five. And with authorization for electronic signature by Commissioner Larson. Perfect.
Okay, have a motion, call for a vote?
Aye.
Aye. Okay. All right, the next one is, uh, UDOT Brush Creek Bridge Replacement Federal Aid Agreement Amendment. They've amended their contract. Price has gone up since they have issued that. It'll now cost us a hundred and twenty-six thousand instead of a hundred and one thousand will be our share.
Okay. Um, has legal counsel looked at all this?
Yes.
Okay. Um, I would make a motion that we approve the UDOT Brush Creek Bridge Replacement Federal Aid Agreement Amendment from one hundred and one thousand dollars to one hundred and twenty-six thousand dollars. I believe that's what our contribution is. Right?
Yeah.
Okay.
There's a little more to it, but that's basically, yes, that's our, our share.
We should probably know the exact amount, though, if we're approving.
Well, I thought I had it in here, but I don't.
Oh.
I've got a different, I got a weed one.
You have that? Okay.
I can get it to you, I'm sure, if I can find it.
Thank you.
Okay, have a motion?
Aye.
I'll call for a vote then.
Okay.
Okay. Aye, approved. All right, next one's the Airport Infrastructure Grant. Our airplane man.
Airplane man is here. Hi, I'm Ken Campbell. I'm the director of the airport for the record. And Mike, I'm going to need your help. This thing went to sleep on me. So Mike has been helping me, hang on. Now just. Click on her picture again, see if it comes up. Should have left it in there. That was my fault. Can you find him again on your drive?
Yeah.
Let's plug it while you move from. Oh. It's nice and warm in here.
Seventy-five.
That's good. All right.
Dammit, cadaver.
There it is. So for the public, while that's thinking, it probably just unthought itself, but for the public, the reason I'm here is, uh, the bipartisan infrastructure law is, uh, pretty obvious to everybody in the nation where millions and millions of dollars are, are being spent to upgrade lots of different things. The airport here in Vernal is, uh, lucky enough, well blessed enough to have the opportunity to share in some of those monies. Uh, about eighteen months ago, uh, I was in here in the county and as well at the city for approvals, and this is, these programs have already been approved, and I'm pretty confident that the county as well as the city approved so many projects just to keep me from coming here very often. So it's been a while, about five months since I've, uh, been to the county or the city. Uh, in that amount of time, one of the major problems that everybody is probably aware of was the, uh, the continuing resolution for the nation, and that slowed down all of this, uh, whole process. The one that you're seeing repeated there that, uh, Mike.
The only one we can get to pull up right now.
That Mike is helping me out with is, uh, just south and west of the main terminal. So the main terminal would be just off the map, barely to the upper right-hand corner of this, just south of my office. Now, we created a program that's already been approved by the county and the city for these top three blue squares, which are corporate level hangers, uh, one hundred by one hundred. I have a letter of intent, uh, from a company that has restricted me via paper of not talking about the name, but, uh, a letter of intent from a company that is a corporation that's going to build one of those hangers. Uh, that little yellow streak that you saw, uh, before, there you go, there's a couple more. The little yellow streak right there, the northern one, uh, is a, uh, what they call a taxi lane. Those, not the two on this slide, but the northern one on this slide was approved for federal funding at the ninety-five percent federal and five percent us level. Uh, John, Commissioner Larson called me earlier today and said, hey, Ken, what's, what's going on? What has happened is the continuing, the continuing resolution at the national level was signed off. That freed up monies that would go to a grant that provides the monies for me to do, this is taxiway Delta or taxi lane Delta. And then taxi lane Bravo is to the north of that, and I'll show you that picture. This one is taxi lane Bravo. So taxi lane Bravo and taxi lane Delta were federally funded, and on Commissioner Larson's desk is a signatory, a signature, uh, that will approve us to move forward with this. It looks like, and you can see my fingers being crossed, it looks like with this approval, we could finish taxi lane Bravo and taxi lane Delta before snow flies this year. Uh, we've let the contract, it's been accepted. We're looking for scheduling right now for Bravo and Delta. Currently, taxiway Charlie is in the middle. I don't have that picture shown, but, uh, it is not only being built, but we have a hangar standing. If you drive by the airport on five hundred east, there's a standing hangar, and then today, uh, Monday, yesterday, we started finishing taxiway Charlie. So for those of you in the public and for the Commissioners, uh, taxiway Bravo, Charlie, and Delta should be finished before snow flies. Uh, that gives us the capacity to have twenty-one hangar capabilities, one standing, one on a letter of intent, uh, to build. And then I have these little ugly pieces of paper all over the state, uh, traipsing around, trying to get people to buy hangar spaces over here in Vernal. I've also advertised on KSL and Craigslist and some other aviation rags that, uh, pilots get to see so that they'll know that, uh, we have not only twenty-one hangar spaces available here in Vernal, but one of the next things that you're going to hear me come back to you on is, uh, uh, we're trying to figure out how to run all utilities to every hangar space, which is a real enticing piece for people throughout the state to not have to run their own utilities and, and all of that. Do you have any questions?
I don't.
I just, in the other slide, so there's two taxiways there that will be coming in or just.
That, that bottom one is a phase two operation, and, and I couldn't afford it, and I couldn't get the federal government conned into believing that I needed four at a time, so. Uh, that's phase next. That'll be down the road, and I, I consider that probably at the past five-year mark down the road. I gotta build, the three top blue squares that you see there are one hundred by one hundred hangers. By the time we get three of those corporations in here, you guys will all smile and love the airport way more, so I'm working on it.
So the next one would be Echo?
Uh, would be, the bottom one there would be Echo when we get to that point.
Yes, in the future.
There's also another half of, uh, one of the pictures that I haven't shown that I also chopped off because of funding and things like that, so. Uh, again, twenty-one hangar capabilities, uh, and we're working it. It's working fast. You have already approved this process, but this is just the grant funding, so I wanted to come in and let the public know that while the federal government has backed us up with, uh, two of these three, we paid for Charlie ourselves with airport money, and, uh, that alone will give us five, uh, sixty by sixty hangers. Then this picture right here, you can see that the bigger ones in the middle on the left are sixty by sixties, and then some of those smaller ones, we could go down to as, as small as fifty by forty to make them more affordable for folks that can't afford a sixty by sixty hangar.
Now, we aren't building the hangers. We're just providing the, the concrete base, basically.
That's correct. Even that, even the concrete is being paid for by the person building the hangar, so we provide the land on a lease. We lease them the land for X amount of years. They build a hangar on it and use it, and I've got a pretty comprehensive lease, uh, that helps them to enjoy that for twenty-five years.
We have people looking for hangers all the time, don't we?
We do, actually, and I think you've heard me say that before here around us, all the way to Heber going, uh, west, and then all the way over to Rangeley. There's just no hangar space available. Uh, this is that theory of if you build it, they will come kind of a deal, so.
I think it's gonna happen.
I hope so. I'm crossing my fingers. If not, who knows? You guys can whip me or something.
Okay, do I have a motion?
No, I just wanted to say that Ken was nice enough to invite me over and take me for a drive to show me all of this, and I greatly appreciated it. and I greatly appreciated it. I'm a visual person, so I really appreciated him helping me to, these, these aerials are great, but it is nice to be on the ground and actually see it and talk about what opportunities there are at the airport, so.
Yeah, and you know, honestly, since you brought that up, Commissioner, I, I think, you know, the public is welcome. Commissioners, city council members, I'd love to have them come out and take a look at what's going on out there and have me be able to explain a little bit more reasoning behind where we're going, where, where the master plan is concerned for the next ten years. It's certainly a source of the, how fast and how, and giant my forehead is growing, but it works.
Welcome to the club.
Thank you.
I greatly appreciate all your hard work.
No trouble, thank you.
And everything you've done for this community and for the airport.
Nope, no trouble.
Appreciate it, Ken.
Thanks.
You have a motion?
I would make a motion, we approve the airport infrastructure grant. Bipartisan infrastructure law, construct taxi lanes B and D.
Okay, call for vote.
Aye.
Aye.
Does that have any amount attached to it or?
It does, but I don't, that's all on Commissioner's desk, it's, as I recall, two point three million dollars federally funded and then we own five percent on top of that, so some smaller numbers, but I can get those numbers to your office as quickly as I can, but I think they're inside of that piece you gotta sign.
Black card.
Thanks.
Thank you.
Okay. Next item we have is a BLM weed control contract amendment. BLM contracts with the UNTA County Weed Department every year. This is a five-year agreement that's renewed every year to make sure that we get it. They pay our weed control officer thirty-five thousand dollars a year and they ask him to look for the weeds, spray on the weeds or get rid of them, however he gets rid of them. Some of them actually go down and hand pull, but that's what this contract's for.
And is it just an extension then?
It's an extension, it's a, an amendment.
That extends it for what?
Another year.
Just one more year?
Yep.
Is it a calendar year?
Yes. I believe it is.
So twelve thirty-one?
With the feds, no, it won't be, it'll be a federal year.
Like an October?
October first, September thirty-first.
Okay. And that would be of twenty-three or is this coming for twenty-four?
This'll be twenty-four, I believe.
Okay. Okay. I would make a motion that we approve the BLM weed control contract amendment to extend it to, for another year for thirty-five thousand dollars a year.
Okay, we have a motion, call for vote.
Aye.
Aye. All right. Contract approval for Evans Media to assist with the county fair, Melanie Selcox.
Melanie with the Western Park. I have the Evans Family Media contract. We're asking for them to assist us for the county fair concert. Really to sum up what it is is we would get all the ticket revenue, we would handle all the tickets. We would pay the deposit, we would pay the concert and stuff, but Evans Family Media would assist in finding the entertainment, handling all of the behind-the-scenes aspects of that concert, not to exceed forty-six thousand. So we've put a cap in there, not to exceed that amount. And with the ticket revenue and stuff, we're hoping that stays in around the ten thousand mark.
Now, you're talking about Steve Evans getting the whole forty-six thousand, not to exceed forty-six thousand?
He won't exceed the forty-six thousand, we will, we will pay the deposit of the artist and pay the artist the full amount. We will sell the tickets, the county will take in the profit of those tickets. So hopefully that will wash there and he'll, he'll handle everything else, but we've put a cap as far as to not exceed the forty-six thousand.
Okay, um, did we discuss that in our last, and I know we had a discussion about this?
We did, so it's all in that revenue, the artist would be thirty, the tickets would be like thirty-six or something in that, that amount that he has there with a deficit of estimated around sixty-six.
Thousand?
No, sixty-six hundred, sorry.
Okay, I'm just trying to grasp how this all works in my head, sorry. So we're, we're going to collect the revenue from the sales, the ticket sales, correct?
Correct.
But then we have to pay him to, to be the promoter, basically?
No, he will give us all of the advertising costs and everything, so it's, it's a trade, basically, he's doing it, he's gonna advertise everything for us. He's getting, going to give us around fifteen thousand dollars worth of advertising and he'll put on the concert, he'll do all the back part of that. We just are taking the revenue side or the cost side of it to help him in the promoting of it.
Okay, have we, have we done that before, I mean, are we set up or is that gonna have?
That's usually how we have done like the block parties and stuff, like when we do Main Street and that. That's usually the same, we do the same thing. As far as the fair has went, we have done it with a different person prior and that person has taken all the revenue, but taken all of the cost of it, so we didn't do anything with that. And you guys are aware of that situation last year, so we went with a different situation this year and hopefully that will.
So I'm, in your, I know we don't know what the ticket sales are gonna be, but roughly then we're paying about sixteen thousand for the, on top of what we would get in revenues is what we're calculating?
Hopefully around six thousand.
Around six?
Yeah, six thousand as well.
Paying him once we have the ticket sales?
Yes.
Okay.
And that's in your budget?
Yes, so I actually have, in case the worst were to be, I would have this forty-six, but in there if we had to, if nobody bought a ticket or anything to it.
Wow.
So we pray that that doesn't happen again, right Mike?
I do have a question, when you-
Do it.
So does the forty-six thousand include the entertainer, everything?
Yes, the entertainers.
You're contracting with him and he's gonna get it, but, so even the deposit is part of the forty-six thousand?
Yes, so the artist, we have a cap on, it would be a B artist, so it would be a cap at thirty thousand. And then when they do the backline for a concert, which is their green room and all of the stuff that they require to come in, their stage lights, all of that would be added into it. So we've capped that to pay the artist and the backline at the forty-six, so that would be all costs incurred.
Okay, that, I just want, that was unclear to me. I was taking forty-six thousand him and then thirty thousand-
That's the deposit.
Artist is separate.
Oh, yeah.
So forty-six thousand for the conference, for the concert and everything that costs to produce the concert and we get all the-
Revenue.
The revenue.
Correct.
And you'll be selling the-
We will be selling the tickets, just like we do with the Derby, through that purple pass that has already been through.
Okay.
Okay.
Any other questions?
Hmm, I don't think so.
We do have three artists that we've looked at, all three of which would be, I believe, really good with the community. Steve felt very good with all three of them. I can't give the name yet, but all three of those will be, we feel very good.
Okay.
So.
I'd say something, I might start a rumor. And I don't need that.
Just leave it.
Okay, do I have a motion?
I would make a motion that we approve the contract for Evans Media, is it Evans Family Media?
Yes.
Evans Family Media to, when we say assist with the county fair, or would you say secure?
I'd just put to assist.
It says assist in here in the contract that he'll be assisting us, this has went through Jonathan Stermer as well.
Okay, so then to assist with county fair. Up with a maximum amount to be paid forty-six thousand and the county receives, to Evans Family Media and the county to receive the revenues off the ticket sales.
The forty-six thousand will not pay Evans Family Media. The forty-six thousand, we will pay the deposit to the artist, to secure the artist and then we will write a final check for the artist, the night he performs.
And we don't have to pay Evans Family Media?
No, Evans Family Media is just, he's just assisting it with us. It's good PR for him and it gets his name out there as well.
Oh, so we're not paying him, that's, I'm a little confused.
Oh my.
So we're gonna pay the, he's gonna get the, he's gonna find the artist for us, but we're gonna pay that deposit and the final artist and we take in that revenue.
And the backend stuff, the backline or whatever you call that.
The only thing we may, he may pay that we may have to make a check to him on is the stage. He doesn't know if that guy will bill him or bill us, but we will take all that revenue not to exceed the forty-six thousand.
Total, for the whole, including Steve Evans Family Media and the artist and everything?
Anything, in the contract, Steve Evans is doing it all to help us. We're just having him assist us in the negotiating of finding that artist.
Okay, and that included the advertising as well?
Yes, in here it says Evans Family Media agrees to heavily advertise and promote the concert on each of its six marketing platforms. This will be a value of fifteen thousand and will include sponsor mentions.
Okay.
Was. I quit, I'm going home.
Are you gonna get all this right?
So I'm gonna go back, so we're not paying, I'm gonna go back to my original question here, 'cause you just kinda confused me again.
Thank you.
I'm not paying Steve Evans.
So the forty-six thousand is what it's gonna cost to put this on. So there isn't an agreement with Steve Evans, with Evans Family Media?
There is an agreement that says he will assist us in finding it. The agreement, though, is that we will pay up to forty-six thousand.
For a concert?
For a concert with everything included. We don't, we don't pay that to him. We're, we're just basically covering that fund.
He's kind of the middleman to find the entertainment-
Right.
And the stage or whatever else is needed and we just pay for it.
Yes.
Okay.
And then we receive all revenue.
So he could advertise-
I got the revenue part.
Then he could advertise-
Of course you did, Mike.
Well, and just putting this other, you kept, because if we're paying the deposit to the performer, are we gonna pay the deposit to Steve Evans and he's gonna pay the performer out of this forty-six thousand dollars?
The contract says we will pay the deposit to the performer.
And, and then the actual performer, when he shows up?
Yes.
We pay that and that's outside of the forty-six or that's included?
That's in the forty-six. So I have a budget of forty-six thousand.
Right, I'm with you there.
And I'm gonna pay my backline, my artist, everything not to exceed forty-six thousand and Steve will do all the advertising, so.
So are you paying Steve for advertising then?
No, he's giving us fifteen thousand dollars worth of advertising.
How much are we paying Steve?
We are not paying Steve.
He's giving us fifteen thousand dollars of advertising free?
Yes, we don't pay Steve, it, this helps him and the community, this is like an advertisement for him.
So we're not paying for advertising?
No.
This just doesn't, this is hard to comprehend.
Steve helps the community out a lot with this sort of thing. This is a public service, basically, for him. It gets his name out with all of his radio stations and everything, so he's just helping us and we're gonna pay the cost of it.
So the ads that he'll be doing on the radio won't cost us?
No, they are donated.
Okay.
And the reason we have a contract with him is because we're basically authorizing him to go find us somebody.
Correct.
Our approval, that's what that's all about.
We're authorizing him, so what it amounts to is we're authorizing him to find us somebody, but he does not want to be stuck with forty-six thousand dollars if nobody buys a ticket, basically, is what it amounts to.
Okay, I think we got it.
Good luck.
I thought I said this really clearly.
All right.
Okay, so I'm gonna start over with this motion.
Okay.
I make a motion to approve the contract with Evans Family Media to assist with the county fair. That's basically what it is.
Yes.
There's no cost involved with that.
Not to Steve, no.
Okay.
Okay, we have a motion, I'll call for a vote.
Aye.
Aye. Thank you. I think I had four or five circles there. Thank you, ma'am. All right, it's time for public comment. Public comment. Is it time for the public to talk to us and, and tell us what they feel and it's not a debate. The county will listen to the comments made and take them into consideration. County will not respond to comments or answer questions. Comments made might be something the county has no power to act on. This is a recorded public meeting, if someone would like to make a comment, they feel, they, excuse me, they will need to wait until the microphone is available and state their name and record. Please be respectful, non-interrupting. Please wait your turn, a total of fifteen minutes will be allotted for public comment. Each speaker will have three minutes for their comment. If you'd like to make a public comment, please come up to the microphone.
I see we have, do we have a student here? Are you here doing this for a class? That's awesome. They used to come to the city council a lot because it's in the evening, but we rarely get students here in our commission meetings, so we're very grateful that you- Oh, are you? Okay, well, we're grateful you came and please pass the word that we have a great meeting, that they should try to come and it's, it frees up their evenings for them. But if you have any questions afterwards, we'd be happy to answer them or help you with anything, okay?
Okay, no public comment. It's time for public comment.
I make a motion that we adjourn.
We are adjourned.